All right, do we have our communications all going here? Okay, good morning, everyone. Can everyone hear me okay? All right, so welcome to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, November 17th of 2020. And first on our agenda today is Mr. Mike Clausen, our Jackson County Assistant Engineer. Good morning, Mike.
First thing I have is a couple of driveway permits. Bellevue, Section 9, it's on Sheverding Ridge Road.
So moved second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the driveway permit farm entrance for a heat Felderman, Section 9 Bellevue, Sheverding Ridge Road as presented. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next I have an entrance permit for Jim Keneath, Tatum Moore Township, Section 25. So field entrance on the side of 6th Avenue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the entrance permit for Jim Keneath, Tatum Moore Township, Section 25, for a field entrance on 386 Avenue as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Next I have the rural county transportation program agreement with the city of Lamont.
And this, Mike, was submitted last year, correct? Is that when that was submitted to that we approved? Yeah, but it was submitted. I mean, it was scored basically the last time we went through the whole, yeah. I have a motion and a second to approve the RCTP project agreement for Lamont, for the city of Lamont as presented. All those in favor was previously approved. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Next, we have a funding agreement with the Iowa DOT. They're repaving Highway 64 from Monmouth over to Wyoming. And when they do that, the counties have the option to pay farther up on the gravel roads at our expense. The DOT will only put like a 10-foot fella down there, but Jones County and other counties have done this. It's gone back, I think it's like 100 feet. And then if that's at the county expense. Jones County is doing theirs and we have a shared road there with First Avenue with Jones County. And we requested that we would go along with that. So we have a funding agreement for that. We ask the board to approve that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the funding agreement with the IOD, Iowa DOT as presented. Any further discussion? I know they did that on the project we did last year from Springburg to Highway 62.
Yeah, we've been doing that on a lot of our asphalt.
So to me, that makes it really nice as far as snow clearing and to make that intersection much more safer in the winter time also.
Right.
Don't get so much gravel.
Yeah.
You don't have the gravel right on the intersection.
That's for sure.
Motor patrol isn't down there trying to blade right up along the edge of the highway and that.
Yeah, we do the same thing. It's mostly where you have that interface of the asphalt and the gravel instead of being right off the traveled way. Now it's 50 feet off. It's a lot easier.
So it's really, I agree. And you said there was one of our, we only have one road from there to Monmouth and Jackson County.
Right, well 12th, there's 12th Avenue that's actually inside the city of Lamont. This is a shared First Avenue there.
Okay.
Their estimate is maybe about $3,000 or $2,000.
Minimal expense for the improvement that does. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Okay, next I got some utility permits. We've got Macocota Valley operative, Macocota, Section 20 and 21. They want to bore along this ditch of 233rd Avenue for about 370 feet. We ask the board to approve that.
Can we approve all of Macocota Valleys or can we do them all one at a time? I think we've done them all.
I just do them all at a time.
Okay, and the second one is for Macocota Valley, Paracels County, township, Section 4. And Van Muren, Section 6. They need to build a new power line across from 86th to 11th, 400th Avenue. And then the third one is for Macocota Valley in Monmouth, Section 7. They need to install holes in aerial road crossing for 17th Avenue.
They're recommended for approval. I have a motion and a second to approve the right-of-way utility permits for Macocota Valley as presented. All in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried.
Just a little update, like I said before, the 341st Street Bridge is open. That's the second day labor bridge we did. And the other one, 364th Avenue, got poured on Friday and should be open by the end of this week. And then the only other construction project that we have that we need to do yet is there's a slide over on the Springburg Highway. Out there by Buddy's where they have the pumpkin.
Okay.
There's a slide behind the guardrail there by the triple box culvert. Jake Sheckel's gonna fix that for us. Sounds like it's gonna be next week. I'll get started on that.
Weather sounds good yet this week, so hopefully that holds off a little bit.
After 60s.
Yeah. Ground won't be froze anyway. Well, good. I appreciate, really acknowledge that the work you did with them bridges and got them done. And they got them finished in a timely manner. I know High, you know, the High Bridge and a couple of other ones we did, 45th Street. And yeah, that's Mill Creek Road was a really nice project finished and appreciate that. So that's moving forward.
So I had, I had somebody come up to me and say, I'm, I'm really glad that you guys finally got smart and started putting concrete decks on the bridges. I says, well, we've talked about it for years, but never got the, never got it. Never got the.
Well, for the difference in cost and the maintenance and the longevity. Okay, sure, appreciate it. Todd, you got anything to add? Todd Keeney's also our interim county engineer is with us today from Clinton County.
No, I just, I was gonna talk, I got a lot of things I want to work with Mike. I want to go look at some of your used beans. We might be in the market to find those.
Oh, I know an auctioneer that can auction them off for you.
We won't need an auctioneer. I'm working with Stacy and Mike and the goal, they're, they're doing the lion's share of putting the budget together. Then I'm just reviewing it with them. So when I'm done with that, when David takes over, he should have a pretty fully formed budget. So all you would really need to do is kind of become familiar with it unless they want to make some changes. And then the last thing I was gonna bring up to you guys. So I don't know what you guys have for a policy for secondary road maintenance guys, like for snow and ice. But we, like I can click out, we just updated a policy since they're considered essential workers now. If you have guys like quarantining, they're not sick, they haven't tested positive, they don't have symptoms. If they're just quarantined because they had an exposure, or we implemented a policy where if we had a snowstorm and we needed people there to get the roads open, we would call those people in even though they're under quarantine. And then as soon as they're done performing, you know, snow and ice removal, mixing and salting, basically wrapped up, ready for the next snowstorm, we would send them home and they continue to quarantine. And if they get overtime, they get overtime, all that stuff. But I don't know what you currently have for a policy, but we've augmented ours to allow us to do that.
Well, I think that makes perfectly good sense.
Well, at this day and age, when things are going the way they are, I think we need to update it, yeah, to include that. I mean, basically you're saying they're quarantined to that truck or that piece of equipment. And it's fogged, you're disinfected when they're done with it and move on, yeah.
So right now, our current policy would be like, if you're supposed to quarantine, you quarantine. You don't do anything else. But so this, this would change that, that if you're needed for emergency snow and ice removal, you could come in, work, form your job, be isolated in your piece of equipment. When that's done, then you would go home and continue your quarantine.
So I think it would be smart to include that.
I think we'd like to update ours too, Mike, if we can do that to that some point. But so, you know, your isolation is you have it. So that's a 10-day isolation.
No, no, not that you have it, you're just isolating because you've been exposed for whatever reason.
Well, that's not what I've been told by the Department of Public Health. So isolation, when you're in isolation, my wife was in isolation. So she had it. No, I was in quarantine.
I'm talking about quarantine.
Okay, so there's two different.
Right, so if this would not apply to if, like I said, if you tested positive or if you have symptoms, you would not get called in. This is for people that are quarantining and have not tested positive and do not have symptoms. If you fit that category, then you could get called in.
Yes, that's actually the quarantine, yeah.
And I'll just email Becky maybe and just have her, I'm assuming she would be the one to update that. It'd be very similar, I'm assuming, to what your sheriff's department has now because they were essential employees from the get-go, from the start of the pandemic, so.
So that policy may have changed in the sheriff department already, you mean, as far as how they're called in or called back or?
When the governor, they consider like law enforcement as essential employees from the start. So they were under a different rules, protocol, rules in secondary road and everybody else were not considered. But now they changed that, leading into winter time operations.
Which makes sense. Makes sense, yeah. Yeah, no, we would love to have that updated if you could work with them with that. I'll move on forward. Now we know where we're at, you know. Anything else, gentlemen?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, guys. All right, is there any visitors or citizens that have any comments or input at this time?
Hi, this is Cheryl Curl.
Good morning, Cheryl.
Good morning. How are you guys?
We're good.
Good. I worked in healthcare for over 40 years here at the local hospital. And my comments relate to highly encouraging you. I see on your agenda, you have discussion and action regarding a countywide face mandate, face mask mandate.
Yes, ma'am.
And looking at Jackson County infection rates, it looks like we have been definitely trending upward with our percent of currently infected. And with the 24-hour positivity rate yesterday being at 38.89% and our cumulative positivity rate being at 20.33%, it just is woefully awful here in Jackson County. And everybody that I've talked to who's in the healthcare field yet, friends and family, they are being taxed to the max. And so I am asking that you serve as the county leaders and take strong consideration in mandating the face mask mandate.
Okay, we certainly, we certainly respect your input. And we would hope if there's other input here at this time, considering this same discussion, that we come to it on our agenda and we will let everybody have their piece, if that's okay.
Thank you. Definitely appreciate all the work you do and stay.
And we certainly appreciate the work you do.
I guess, and we also have to realize that the governor has made a proclamation and a mandate. So we're going to have to follow that as well. So we'll keep that in mind as we're moving forward because we know that we have a problem and we want to do everything we can to try to assist the people to be safe.
Mike, do you want us to, if we have comments about a mask mandate, do you want to wait, us to wait for that item?
I would like until we get to that part of our agenda that we follow our agenda as it's listed.
Okay.
Yeah, we, if you've got time.
Yep, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else, any citizens or public, anyone from the public have comments on anything else other than the mask mandate? All right, if not, we will move on to Lisa, our county auditor.
All right. I just need a motion to approve the minutes of the November 10th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
Motion and second to approve the minutes of November 10th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye opposed nay. Motion carried. See how fast that works. We need more of you. We need more of you. Thank you, Lisa. Luann, would you like to present your business for today? Do we have Sarah on the phone or on the, is Sarah?
She said she would be on the phone when we talked about.
We need to let her, yeah, we need to let her know that we're a little early here if we're gonna talk about it because she wanted to be on.
I'm trying to be about as brief as Lisa was.
No, you might, you might get some more input.
Okay.
We'll just wait a second. Do you have to let her in or can she just get on? All right. So we're joined by Luann Goki, our executive assistant. And I have to apologize, I got ahead of myself. To start the meeting with us today, KMAQ, the newspaper Kelly is with us. And Luann, our executive assistant, Lisa, our county auditor, Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, myself, Mike Stein is our county supervisors. I apologize for that. I think, I hope that everybody knows us all and welcome everyone. Anyway, I apologize. Go ahead.
Okay, calendar for the week. 6 o'clock tonight is Jackson County Economic Alliance by Zoom for Jack. And also at 6 o'clock is the Conservation Board meeting, also by Zoom for Larry. Wednesday, November 18th at 9:00 AM is an Irish meeting by Zoom for Larry. At 10:20 is the Iowa State Auditor's Town Hall meetings via Zoom for any and all of you at leave. At 3 o'clock tomorrow afternoon is Jackson County Compensation Board meeting by Zoom. And my name is on there because I have to run the meeting. At 4 o'clock tomorrow afternoon is ECDC and ECIA Executive and Council meetings by Zoom for Jack. And at 6 o'clock is the Jackson County Water Trail Committee meetings by Zoom for Larry. Thursday, November 19th at 9:00 AM is the Housing Trust Fund meeting by Zoom for Mike. At 11:00 AM is the CSEI meeting by Zoom for Jack. And at 6:30 PM is the Limestone Bluffs RC&amp;D meeting by Zoom for Jack. Friday, November 20th at 9:00 AM is the WIOW workforce CEO office hours by Zoom for Jack. At 1:00 PM is DCAT meeting by Zoom for Mike. And at 3:30 is the Mississippi Valley Workforce Appeal Conference Call for Jack. Monday, November 23rd at 4:00 PM is an Early Childhood Iowa meeting, council meeting by Zoom for Jack. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, November 24th at 9:00 AM.
Well, that just fills up a little bit.
The busy week.
It's gonna be a beautiful week.
It is. Almost 70 by Thursday, they said.
The kids would go outside and play football.
That was nice.
Other times I made snowmen.
Can change.
So the only other bit of business I have today is the mask mandate. And we've already sort of started discussion on that, but.
Okay, so at this time, I guess I would like, Sarah, if you're available, maybe just to touch base on that, what we're, what we're considering. I think most people know the proclamation the governor put out yesterday, different guidelines. And basically, Sarah, if you just want to explain how we come up with our proposed resolution?
Yeah, sure, Mike. So I modeled the resolution that I provided to the board after one that Green County actually passed, I think, last Thursday. Um, it has some strong language. It uses the word shall. And it's actually more, let's say strict than what the government, governor passed yesterday. As what this resolution is saying is that anytime you're indoors, whether it's 15 minutes or less or not, you wear a mask. And additionally, I think, yeah, that's the biggest, I guess, difference from what the governor did. The one caveat, of course, is that this is a resolution and there's not a penalty provided for it. This language again came from Green County that it's not intended to be a punishing, a punitive or stigmatizing resolution, but just to assert that the board feels it's the best interest of the community and to keep everyone safe in Jackson County to mandate or require everyone to wear the masks.
Certainly. We certainly appreciate that. We also see, received a position statement from the Board of Health, our local Board of Health, was basically stated the same guidelines and what they recommended. So I don't know if anybody have a chance to seen that position statement. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on the mask mandate proposed resolution? Wendy, I see you have your hand up.
Good morning. My name is Wendy McCart. I'm the Executive Director with the Macocota Area Chamber of Commerce. And knowing that this was added to your agenda today, of course, our chamber works for, to support our local businesses, organizations and our community partners. So knowing that this was an agenda item, we felt that it was necessary to reach out to our members and get some feedback from them on, on their feedback on what they think would be the best situation here. So we reached out to more than 200 of our members and more than a third of them responded. So we had a wonderful, wonderful rate at which they responded. We're very happy with that. So the first question, and I did email this to the supervisors, I'm not sure if you received the full report or not.
About a 70, 30% of, there were comments all over the board, of course, I read them.
Right. So just for the public purpose, I'm just gonna go over those first four really quick yes or no questions and let you know those responses. The first question would, would you be in support of a countywide mask mandate that would require employees and patrons to wear a mask when inside a business? This would not include a mask requirement outdoors? We had a 68% response saying yes to that and 32% saying no to that. Then we asked, would you be in support of a countywide mandate that would require employees and patrons to wear a mask both inside a business and when unable to maintain six feet of social distancing outdoors in public spaces? Again, same result, 68% said yes, 32% said no. This next one I found interesting. Do you currently require your employees to wear masks while working? We had 52% say yes, 48% said no. However, our next question, when we asked, do you currently require that your patrons wear masks when they come into your business? 69% said yes. So there's more businesses right now asking that their patrons wear a mask when they come in rather than their employees wearing them. 31% required or responded that, no, they do not ask for their patrons to wear a mask when they come in. So just some interesting notes there. I also spoke with the Dubuque Chamber as a follow-up to see what sort of feedback they were getting from their local businesses and organizations after the city of Dubuque implemented their mask mandate. And they said the best thing that has come out of it for them is they had quite a few businesses that were trying to ask or require that their patrons wore masks when they came in. And this really took the pressure off of them to have to be the ones enforcing that because they could just print, print, post and point to the mandate on their wall that said, you know, this is a city regulation and I want to make sure my business stays open, so please wear a mask. Took a lot of the pressure off of them. That was the, the main feedback that Dubuque had for me in regards to theirs, so.
Well, there's a fine line. I would say if you're in business and you're a business person, there's a fine line to stay in business, keep your head above water during these trying times. I've had several calls myself from small businesses and said, I want you to be the bad guy. I said, I don't mind being the bad guy, you know? I mean, we're not trying to take away anybody's rights or anything like that, of course. I've heard we just want to be responsible to our family, friends and, and to the general public. So I guess I've talked to several healthcare professionals and if we can keep one of them from not obtaining this terrible virus, it'd be a plus. Same goes for our school system. If we can have one staff member not be infected is a positive. I do have a concern that I got a couple of calls that I never really thought of myself. And this is our small local EMS services. They're calling and they're telling me, or sending me a message saying, you know, a majority of our calls now are related to the COVID virus. So they're getting a little nervous if we get into a situation where, and mind you, these are all volunteer people. They're all volunteers. So if we don't have that EMS system, if there's an accident, for sake, God forbid, we may not have personnel to, if, if they're quarantined, we're not, somebody to respond to that situation. So if we can protect a few, I would think it's our responsibility, but that's just my opinion.
And the other point there that I just wanted to make on behalf of the chamber is that we've seen a significant impact to a lot of our local businesses here that are now short-staffed. They're having to close, they're having to reduce hours, or they're incredibly short-staffed and just really working their tails off trying to keep their doors open right now because they have so many employees who are either out positive with COVID or quarantining because they've been exposed. So it's definitely something that, you know, regardless of whether or not we hopefully don't wind up with a shutdown, you know, a lot of our businesses are already there because they don't have another choice right now.
All we want to do is try to keep people safe.
Right.
We're not infringing on anybody's rights or, or anything like that. Or did you have a comment? I, you're muted.
I do have a comment, actually. I'm Erica Barker, 3rd Ward City Council. I'm actually speaking in my official capacity as an employee of the Mississippi Valley Regional Blood Center. We are members of the Macocota Area Chamber of Commerce. We are the sole provider of blood products to over 115 hospitals in the Midwest. Jackson County Regional Hospital being one of those that we provide blood products to. Throughout our regions to meet patient need, we need to collect at least 3,500 red blood cell donations, 400 platelets and 200 convalescent plasma donations each week to meet patient need. And we are currently only collecting at best to 3,200 red blood cells. We're only seeing about 70 convalescent plasma. That's the plasma that's treating COVID patients that are struggling to recover. We have a 10% loss in platelet donations because we cannot hold enough blood drives due to this pandemic because donors aren't coming in for their appointments or businesses are canceling their blood drives. This is a public health issue. We all know that. It's my job to see that there are blood products on the shelf when, when you need it, when your child, when your parent need it. And quite frankly, we are struggling. We are short-staffed due to the, due to the pandemic. So we are struggling as well and that affects how we supply our hospitals. So I would highly encourage you to support a mask mandate that is more strict than what the governor has, has put out. So thank you for your work and everything that you do to protect the community. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica, for your input there. And on the positive side of that, I gave blood last week in Bellevue and they were turning away walk-ins because they were full.
Good to hear, good to hear.
Positive note, yes. Donna?
Good morning. I'd like
Good morning. Um, I'd like to thank you all for, um, considering this mask mandate in Jackson County. Uh, I listened to Kim Reynolds' proclamation last night and think that it didn't go far enough. And after having listened to the, um, the proclamation or the, uh, what I guess proclamation that Sarah read earlier, I, I think that that's a lot more in line with what we need in Jackson County. So I would like to see stronger action than, um, than was presented last night. I'm also concerned, uh, about small businesses in Jackson County. I have, you know, personally, I have limited my interaction with people a lot. I go to the grocery store. I go to Walmart and pretty much nowhere else. And I would like to be able to, um, to use the local businesses. I think it's so important that, that, uh, we do patronize them through this and to help them, be able to stay in business, however, without a, a mask mandate. And I, I think that it's a little harder to do that. So I, I want us to be able to support these local businesses, but to do it safely. I would also like to see if this is passed, that it be really proactively encouraged in the papers and on the radio and in person by everyone, because I know that there's a lot of resistance to a mask mandate. And it, I, it takes some education and, um, I think encouragement by people of influence in the county. And so I would like to see that be an added component. And again, I'd like to thank you for your time and for, uh, your willingness to, uh, look into this more robust mandate. Thanks again.
Thank you, Donna. Um, I guess along with, um, the proposed mandate, I'm going to reiterate that we are all responsible for our health and wellness of our friends, our families, our neighbors and the general public. So again, we've always strongly encouraged, um, wearing a mask and social distance. So anyone else would like to speak in regards to a Jackson County mask mandate?
Yeah, Pastor Will Leighton, uh, I'm the pastor at St. John's Lutheran Church in St. Tenetus and at St. Paul's Lutheran Church in Lamont. I'm also the chaplain to Lamont Fire and Rescue Department. Uh, I would like to speak in favor of this, uh, proposed, uh, mandate. And there's a couple of reasons for that. Um, I know that a, a lot of the talk goes around that we would like to avoid a lockdown and of course we all would. I want to remind us that some members of our community are in lockdown. Uh, as a pastor, I'm aware every day that my church members who are in nursing homes and other kinds of care facilities have not been able to see anyone outside of that for eight months now, including their pastor. Uh, and so that's not going to change until we can slow the spread and, and slow down that community spread. I also would, uh, as a faith leader, reiterate, uh, what some of the business leaders said in terms of taking the pressure off, sort of leaders of organizations. We do require masks when we are worshiping in person, although, uh, currently we are not, um, as of this past Sunday. And so I could go on with that, but I think that others have, have hit a lot of those points that are important. And so thank you all for considering this mandate.
Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor.
And this is Nick Hockenberry from the Jackson County Economic Alliance. I wanted to, uh, maybe offer some reiteration of what Wendy and what I heard Donna say as well. I think part of, uh, what, what your proposed mandate does is help clarify and make it easier to communicate to the public. You know, in, in a simpler terms, um, what we saw come out from the governor, while I think it was a good step forward. It's led, you know, I've had, I've reached out to, uh, to get some clarification on some exceptions and, and how it should be instituted and, and all of those things. And I think a, a much clearer voice is what I'm hearing out of your proclamation here. And it will offer again what our, what our goal is, which is to keep us from having to go into another shutdown and harm our local economy any more than it already has been. But I will say, you know, even the, the governor's, um, steps forward here to, for instance, to close bars and, and restaurants for most service after 10:00 PM, that's going to impact our, our economy here in those businesses and the state and our federal legislators, um, really need to take that into account as they're moving forward. For in the state in the new session here and, and for our legislators as they meet again.
Thank you, Nick, for your input. Donna, do you have some more?
Yes, I just have a question. Um, I'm wondering how this county mandate, if it would have effect on the schools, because the schools have, each have their, their own rules. Um, and having watched a couple of the schools, Bellevue and Macochona, there seems to be a difference in the, uh, rates of infection for students and staff at the schools. So would this have any effect on that? Are schools still able to have whatever mandates they choose?
Well, I guess my view of that was that they can still in their building, but it's a public building. So Sarah, maybe you would like to address that?
Technically, yes, I would say this applies to any public place. So yes, it would include the schools. I'm not sure what Bellevue's doing, but I think Macochona does have a mask man. I mean, I think they are wearing masks.
Bellevue does too.
Well, Bellevue's is a little bit different. As I understand it, I could be wrong, but as I understand it in classrooms, if they have the desks six feet apart, then students don't have to wear masks. You know, I, I personally find that not necessarily real effective. And I haven't checked their cases, I think maybe this week, but they, it looks like they perhaps have more cases than Macochona. So, you know, I, I, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just tossing that one out there.
Yep. Okay. What Sarah says, it would, it would be maybe for the schools as well.
Yeah. And, and, and again, the social distancing is in our resolution. If you can't maintain your social distancing, of course, then the mask mandate is in effect as I read it.
Yep.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just have one comment here that someone, uh, joined us on chat. This is Sarah Jones. She's a member of the Macochona community. Now she's unable to speak because she does not have a microphone, but she is attending this morning in order to express support for a mask mandate. And she wants to thank you all for considering this.
Thank you. Anyone else? We thank you all for your input. I'm sorry.
Hi, uh, my name is Allison Simpson. Um, and I am a business owner in Jackson County, but I'm mostly wanting to speak as a mom and a daughter. My mom, dad, stepmom and sister are all nurses in the area and I've seen the impact that they're experiencing, um, without this mask mandate. And, and just asking to give them some reprieve in the healthcare system. Um, and as a mom, I've pulled my son out of school once again. He requires a nebulizer and he is unable to wear a mask. So just thinking about people in our community that are relying on others to act. I think that the proposed mask mandate that you guys are putting forth will be very beneficial to all of them.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So Sarah, if you could, according to the TH, what I read yesterday, the Dubuque County, when they passed their mandate, it not go into effect until publication. Is that correct?
That's a mandate.
Dubuque did an actual ordinance. So they had to follow the same laws you would for any other ordinance. What I have proposed is a resolution. So if you approve it today, it is, um, in effect today. And I, one thing I did forget to bring up is um, I did put a sunset date of April 1st in here. Um, obviously if you want to extend it, end it early, whatever, you have that ability, but, um, I did put a end date in the event that we don't. It, it wouldn't require us to take future action to end the mask mandate, um, unless you chose to.
And I think that's what we discussed yesterday. And I think that's what we should do.
I thank you for clarifying the resolution and the ordinance difference in that, uh, when it would, uh, take effect. And if we did do so, and also the expiration date. Any other comments?
With that, I would make a motion to approve our resolution for the mask mandate.
I would second.
I have a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the mask resolution as presented. Any further discussion? Again, I'd like to reiterate, we're doing this for the best, to be responsibilities to our family and friends and, and to the general public. So please don't call your local board rep, executive assistant with your negative input. My number is readily available. So call me if you have some comments or criticism against this.
They can call any of us.
All, any one of us, yes. So.
It just makes sense. It's common sense.
Don't pass your frustrations on to our assistant. We need her. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried. Thank you all for your input.
And thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, Luanne, you're still on the agenda. Okay. You went away and answered the phone on us. So I didn't know if we had anything else. It didn't look like it on your. All right. Next on our agenda is Shandra from ECIA, discussion on our RTA. Shandra, are you still there? I seen you were there once. I seen ECIA was there anyway. I don't know who's there. I don't see him now.
Yeah, here he comes. Okay, how about now?
I see you now. I don't see you, but I hear you.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I need to open my laptop. Sorry. Okay. There we go.
We got you. There, now we can see you. Good morning.
Good morning, uh, board. Thank you very much, uh, for providing me this opportunity today. Why am I be on the agenda today? Just to check if there are any questions or concerns from Jackson County before we walk into the RTA work session and, uh, on second of, uh, December. At the last RTA meeting, you guys did see the information what we provided. So there are three key points what we want board to consider. Obviously this is a very crucial time for RTA. What audition we make, it will impact the ridership. With the reduction in ridership, uh, it seems to be a, a long-term effect on RTA because it'll affect our STFDA. And indeed, uh, that will make us hurt more in the, in the, in future. So, so until now, uh, we had this major contract, hey, uh, from Head Start that really covered our back. Now with that gone, we got hit off 180,000. Uh, however, we are not asking the board to cover 180,000. Now you as a board with other two counties, you guys decide how much, uh, we need, RTA should get. That's the first question. Second question is how the funding should be distributed? Like is that based on rights and miles or is it based on population? Your call. And third is, uh, where did, where should we use the funding? You should, that we only use for coordinator and the free rides we are providing and so on and so forth. And most of this funding will not be used when we have a positive balance. So as you all know, so today I want to see if there are any questions that Jackson County have that I can address before the uh, work session so that, uh, you guys can discuss among yourself before you come to the work session. So.
No, I don't really have any questions, Shonda. Um, I guess, you know, my thought is that when, I'm sure you had this conversation with Delaware and Dubuque County as far as questions also. My thought process is that when we get together and have this conversation, that questions will arise, of course. And, and you certainly usually have the answers for them. So.
Thank you.
So, uh, no, I, I'm, I'm not, uh, I, I don't have any questions at this time. I don't know if Larry or Jack.
Oh, okay. Yeah, man. Okay. Uh, that's good. Uh, but if there's anything that you need from us, just shoot me an email. I'll be more happy to provide the.
Yeah, no, we certainly know that it's a challenge, uh, the way things are going right now. And, uh, we, we hope that we can fight through this like everybody else. So do the best we can.
Amen.
Anything else, Shandra?
That's it. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. So.
Thank you for joining us here today. So.
I'm sorry, as we are talking to the board, do the supervisors have a engineer on board?
They have a what?
Do you have a county engineer for Jackson County?
Yes, we hired one last week. He'll start the first.
We have an interim engineer here. Yes. Would you like to speak to him?
Oh, no, I, I, I know Todd is interim, but do you have, uh, did you guys hire a new engineer?
Yes, we did.
We did. Was the start date.
Okay. I mean, uh, obviously I need to meet with the new engineer and give orientation and all that. So.
Absolutely.
Who should I contact for, to get his contact information?
Becky, but Becky's not here until Thursday. He just wanted his contact information, which I think he could have his phone number, email.
Yeah, I could have his phone number.
Appreciate it. I'll get in touch.
Yeah, Becky was.
He's not coming. Is, January 4th would be his first day unless he gets moved up here from Florida sooner. So we can get you his number, but other, otherwise he's not going to be in the office till after the first of the year.
Okay, okay. I will work with Becky and Todd and, uh, go from there. Thank you.
Yeah, as I understand it, he's, they're going down to move him back the second week in December. And I believe he found a place to go to move into. So, um, we expect him here mid-December. Tentatively. But we do have his contact information and Becky will return end of this week or next week. I think next, I think you might have to wait till Monday to get to talk to Becky.
No problem. I will get in touch with her next week.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Next on our agenda today, we have Rick Walters and Carrie Merrick from the Hillcrest Family Services for an update. Rick or Carrie, are you on or available? Yeah, you're right. Okay. So Nick, uh, you're still available here is can you do this in 10 minutes?
I sure can.
We're going to cut you short otherwise, buddy.
Yeah, that's fine. Um, so appreciate the opportunity here to kind of talk, talk to y'all about this. And thanks, Mike, for encouraging me to reach out to, uh, Luanne to share this with you guys. So, uh, for some background, um, the, what we're looking at here for Jackson County is the opportunity to partner with the University of Iowa through their Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities Program. Many of you might, might be familiar with, uh, projects we've done with this group in the past. We worked, uh, a few years ago now, um, with Macochona on a branding project, a community branding and logo update project, uh, as well as the kind of a community marketing plan. We also worked on the Jackson County Tomorrow Plan with urban and regional planning students. And that was looking at how to attract and retain young families in the county. So we've done, done a variety of projects with this group before, but they've, uh, kind of changed the emphasis of the program at the university in the most recent years. And what they like to do is focus on a, a community or a, a region. In this case, it would be a county and do a, a large number of diverse projects in a single school year. Um, and so, uh, they, the program administrator reached out to, to our office because we've worked with them in the past. Um, currently this year, they're working in Manchester, just in the city of Manchester, and they're doing, uh, around 15 projects. They'd be. They'd be looking to do something similar in in Jackson County. And we proposed that we look at a full county approach, so not just focus on, say, Macokota or Bellevue or Preston for all of the projects, but to see if we could spread the impact of their work throughout the county. And they would like to do that within the next school year, so the 21, 22 school year. And really, our hope here is that there would be an opportunity for some countywide or even regional projects to go along with that. I can imagine the Conservation Board has a lot of work that they're planning for the coming years. And maybe there's an opportunity to partner with the university, one of the departments within the university, or the Historic Preservation Commission, or the Historical Society. Obviously, there is some great opportunities to partner with the university and their various departments on projects that they're focused on, too. I did share, I believe, some links to their website that shows the projects that they've done in the past, some pictures. And and it should show you a little bit about the diversity of projects that they hope to achieve. But just the kind of, like I said, they've kind of reformulated this program. They are now a little bit more prescriptive about how many of each type of project they want to do. So for instance, they want a couple of planning projects. So those might be things like housing needs assessments, trails planning, those kind of things, hazard mitigation work. Other other projects that they want to do are around five engineering projects. So that could be, you know, whether you're looking at a preliminary engineering for a rehab project on a building or say preliminary engineering for a site site plan, like we did in in Bellevue with the engineering students on a potential housing development, those type of projects. They also want to do a couple of film projects, which is unique. I know Macokota in the past worked with the university on a documentary on the the downtown fire that and the impact on the the firemen and the community and kind of help document that for historical purposes. So those type of projects. A law project, working with the the College of Law at the university. One of those things, for instance, was ECIA worked with the College of Law on proposing new legislation around the land banks. And then one public art project and one marketing project. And a public art project, for instance, was like what was done in Macokota just recently with that mural in the downtown. So obviously, they took public input, partnered with a private property owner to secure a place and then did the actual art project itself. There is a cost for this this program. It's $50,000. Obviously, you know, 15 planning and and engineering projects are certainly worth that price tag and the ability to work with the experts in those fields at the at the university. But but really, our hope here is to spread the impact as well as the cost throughout the communities. So we've met, our office has met preliminarily with city Bellevue officials, the administrator and the mayor, and in Preston, both the administrator and the mayor. And in Macokota, we met with the manager, city manager, as well as some other staff to discuss this and whether they'd be interested. And we got a yes from all of them. So we're reaching out to to all of you to see if that's also the the direction you'd like to go. If you'd like to be a part of that, we have a conference call with the program administrator this Friday to say, hey, we've gotten positive signs or signals from our public partners and are looking to move forward here, but what do we need to know? When do we need to commit? Because it'll come down, obviously, to some financial commitments that all of the public partners are going to have to put in their upcoming budgets. So I kind of spit all of that out as quickly as I could. But if you have any questions, Mike?
I do, yeah, I guess my biggest question, I would like to take a better look, I guess, at some of the project and maybe some of the links that you, I really didn't dive into some of them links you have done. Again, I guess the price tag comes with with the price. So that price comes down as more participants that we have. So I guess I'd like to have more commitments, I guess, like you say, somebody's going to commit. I I'd like to know how many we have. Do we have 10 commitments? Do we have three? There's there's quite a difference to that, you know.
Yeah, and 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 part of what we're what we're proposing is that, you know, the cost, like I said, it's spreading out the cost. It would be sort of pro rata based on how many projects would be, say, within Macokota, the city of Macokota, or organizations within Macokota. So perhaps, you know, you can see an arts organization might be interested in partnering with the university's art program on a on a specific project. And in which case, they would provide the the necessary match to to secure that project. And so some, what I didn't say is some projects are year-long projects, some projects are only semester projects. So, you know, it kind of complicates if you're looking at how much a cost for a single project is. You know, obviously, semester-long projects shouldn't cost as much as a a year-long project. But yes, Mike and Jack and Larry, we we will definitely bring back more information as it relates to, you know, is is Macokota Bellevue and Preston interested in enough projects to really make make it spread out the cost? And then how many might the county or departments within the county be interested in?
I guess my second question also is, is there an overlap here? Is some of these things, is there some of these things, what we should be doing already? Like our Jackson County Community Foundation, Jackson County Economic Alliance, our chambers? Are they should be doing these types of things anyway? Or some of it particular, looking into that?
Well, so in, so within our office, we've had discussions. We likely will take on a project ourselves with the university. So we'll we'll be paying for whatever that cost ends up being, whether it's a semester or a year-long project. We haven't quite figured out. But yeah, and a couple of the ideas we're looking at are taking a look at perhaps the mix of businesses we have now, allowing us to to work with the university students to target potential new businesses that would complement the existing business and industry we have in the county. And that'll allow us to to target prospects more effectively. So, yeah, there there are some opportunities with our existing organizations might be able to partner on projects themselves and and fund that part of the the collaboration.
Okay, well, I appreciate the explanation. Does anybody have any questions for Nick? I guess, yeah, I'd like a little more time to see what comes out of Friday's meeting that you have and maybe touch base with us again, where we might be and how many participants that we have locked in, I want to say.
I guess that's the key to our participation.
Yeah. We're not ready to throw 45,000 out there, you know, that's.
Yeah.
We're not.
Well, and and I guess, so from from my perspective, if there are, maybe reach out with it with your department heads or if any of you have projects that you have an interest in. That might be the opportunity there. If if, say, the county isn't necessarily, you know, doesn't see the need for an engineering project in in that time period, then maybe they don't have have to participate, you know, either financially or actually with with the university students. I just wanted to make sure, and I appreciate Mike, you you prompting me. But I wanted to make sure that the county was aware of the opportunity here to to be a part of this.
Yeah, and that's and that's kind of, again, when you say an engineering project, I guess we're in a dilemma a little bit right now. We're in a transition, I should say, you know, so we're transitioning to a new engineer. We have a part-time engineer hired that does a lot of designing for us, so. And engineering, so we're we're following through with that, you know, again, in our transition. So hopefully, that all works out for us in a positive manner. We certainly like to keep abreast of it. So if you would, just keep us updated of participation and what you hear from Friday's input.
I will do that.
All right, have a great day, Nick.
Yep, you too.
Yep. Okay, so.
I still don't see the other two people on there.
Rick or Carrie, are they participating today?
Yeah, we forwarded the agenda to them yesterday.
Is there a contact number that that you have? We'll take a short recess at this time. Okay, we are back. Welcome everyone again. And we will reconvene at this time. I was looking for the right word. I stopped me for a minute. Help me out. So we are joined by Carrie Merrick and Lynn Boops. From Carrie is from Hillcrest Family Services. And Lynn, of course, is our local mental health disability coordinator.
Okay, thank you, Mike. With us today is Carrie Merrick from Hillcrest. She is the clinical director of the Macokota Office based out of the Dubuque-Hillcrest Office. Also with us was hopefully going to be Rick Walters, but I understand that he had a conflict on his schedule and is in a conference call with SAMSA, the federal agency, which is actually providing the funding for the behavioral health clinic. So Carrie is going to give us an update on the status of services available to Jackson County residents through the Macokota Office of Hillcrest. And hopefully also can discuss a little bit about the new service available through the behavioral health clinic. Carrie, it's all yours.
Thank you. Well, thanks for having me. Hi there. Yeah, I will talk a little bit about what we are currently doing out of our Macokota Office and then also how we are expanding with some new grant funding. So it's just an exciting time, so a perfect time to be speaking with all of you. So if you're familiar with our Macokota Mental Health Center, it's on South Olive Street. And we currently provide outpatient therapy and outpatient medication management services. And we also have integrated health home care out of that office. If you're not familiar with IHH, it's case management service that helps link people to resources and supports in the community, helps them coordinate medical and behavioral healthcare appointments. So we have one full-time licensed social worker out of that office, who she's also a certified play therapist. So she sees kids and adults for therapy. We have a psychiatrist there, and we are also onboarding a part-time psychiatric nurse practitioner as well to assist with our medication management services. So and we will likely be hiring another full-time social worker here soon. So we're growing a little bit. We've downsized in the last year, but starting to grow again, which is really exciting. So we have our therapy, medication, and IHH services currently going on. What's really exciting for us is in March, we received a grant called CCBHC. I don't know if anyone is familiar with what that is. It stands for Certified Community Behavioral Health Clinic. And these exist not only through the state of Iowa, but throughout the country. And it's quite a massive grant that allows us to serve more individuals, those who are underinsured or even without insurance. So we can open our doors a lot wider to serve people in the community that normally wouldn't be able to be served. So they can get all of our current services, therapy, medication, our IHH services. And with this new grant, we are dipping our toes into substance use disorder treatment as well. It's part of the grant. So we will be having a certified addiction and drug counselor onsite in Macokota about once a week to start off with. She'll be doing evaluations, she'll do outpatient, and and likely be evolving into doing some groups as well. And it's my understanding she's working somewhat in alignment with ASAC as well to try to partner, how we can work together to provide these services and not necessarily compete, but just, you know, work together as partners. So we know that's always a need and a growing need. So we're excited about adding that to our menu of services. And we also are expanding in the direction of primary care. We are currently finalizing hiring a family nurse practitioner there in Macokota. That's also part of the CCBHC grant. So it sounds like she might be starting in the next three weeks to provide the primary care. Again, what's really exciting is this is a service that's available to anyone, even without funding or without insurance. And we have an outreach coordinator person as well hired for this program to help get that message out, to go out to agencies and churches and other resources, organizations to educate about this new grant, to find those individuals that need the service. At the beginning of all this, we we talked about, you know, going under the bridges and look for people that don't know where to go for help. And maybe they don't go because they don't think they can get the help because they don't have funding, they don't have the resources, so.
So I guess that is my question, Carrie, maybe, and Lynn both. How do we get this info out to the public to say that these services are available? Do do we work with hospice hand in hand or do we, is that not?
I guess I don't think a half-hour show on the radio would be a great place to start.
Yeah, just talk maybe, yeah.
Absolutely. We're open to all ideas. You you know your community in Jackson County well. So you, so we're we're happy to hear ideas. Right now, Nicole, that's our, Nicole Harms is our outreach coordinator. According to Rick, she's meeting and greeting with agencies, service providers, shelters, food banks, and churches to let them know about this program. But if there's other ideas from this group, we are happy to hear them because that is one of our priorities, is to get the word out of this program. We also have some, we have, we just launched some radio ads that will be on KM, is it KMEQ radio there? So, yep, so we're advertising that way, but we are happy to do outreach, come to speak to groups. And so, yeah, if you have direction or ideas on that, we're happy to, we'd be happy to hear.
I would have, did you say her name is Nicole?
Nicole.
Me, we can follow up on one of the suggestions that just came here, and that's being on a local half-hour radio program on KMEQ. But also, I'd like to network with her and the region's crisis system. And because it's important that those two programs will be familiar with each other. And then also, I would just be interested in talking to her about who she's been able to contact to date and who else we might want to direct her to.
That would be really helpful. We're, you know, we are very excited about this expansion and and we want people to take advantage of this service because we we know we'll be able to reach more people than we ever have. So so Lynn, if, would you like me to send you her contact information as a start?
That'd be great.
It's great to know that the services, these services are available, but we need to get it out there so people know it.
And I think it'd be great if, when she's on board, if she would come to the board meeting. And we would have an opportunity to really understand further what all she's going to be involved with. And we do have a lot of listeners.
Yeah, with, yeah.
So I guess one of the questions I have, I'm curious, is this service already up and running and are the doors open?
Absolutely. So Rick could speak a little better to the referral process, but honestly, it's just a call to our Macokota Mental Health Center, and we'll start the process from there. We we have some workflows in place already. If they just call, I I just need help and I don't know where to go. We we take it from there and we'll we'll get them, we'll link them with the services that, you know, are assessed to be needed. And and again, we have the funding there, so absolutely, it is up and running.
And what are the hours? Is it five days a week? Only part-time or?
So it's it's in alignment with our Mental Health Center hours, which is Monday through Friday, eight to five. And but we do have, we're working in alignment with the mobile crisis team down in Jackson County. And but we do have, we're working in alignment with the mobile crisis team down in Jackson County as well. So that service is part of the CCBHC, but we're not providing it. It's just going to be currently run as it is in Macokota.
Now, when you say mobile crisis outreach team, that the one offered through the Eastern Iowa NHBS region or is it a team specific to the Hillcrest Agency?
It's your Jack, you have a Jackson County Crisis Team, correct? Is it run by Foundation Two?
That are available and one of the services is actually mobile crisis outreach.
And that's to Robert Young.
To Robert Young by Foundation Two.
Yep.
Has Nicole been in conversation already then with the Robert Young Center Crisis Team, do you know?
Rick has. Yep, Rick Walters has.
Good. So it sounds like we need to do a little bit of networking here together with Lynn and Rick and Nicole kind of touching base and working through what's available and what and how and then explaining it to us.
Well, the only way we can get the story out is if we know what the story is.
Absolutely. And I was aware of the program and kind of anticipating that Rick might reach out to do some of this networking. So it'll be important that Nicole and I get together as soon as possible and start those conversations.
Absolutely.
So can you give the location of the clinic?
So it'll be located right in our Macokota Mental Health Center. Again, it's just really an expansion of what we're already doing to include the SUD services, primary care. And again, just be able to serve more people than we currently are because again, underinsured, without insurance. So but it's currently located within our mental, our mental health center already there in Macokota.
And so for people that might not be familiar where that is, it is in the city of Macokota and it's on South Olive Street at 115 and 117 South Olive, I believe. Do you know, do you have just one address now or is it still two separate addresses, although it's in the same building?
Yep, it actually moved to the other side of the building. Our address is the 117 South Olive Street.
So that's the address for both the Mental Health Center now and the behavioral health clinic?
Yep, yep. And that clinic will serve all of Jackson County.
That was my next question. Will it serve, our mental health region, as you're aware, is five counties. Most closest to us is Clinton County, which is actually what, three to five miles south of the city of Macokota? So is the clinic available to residents of other counties besides Jackson?
So we've had some discussion about that and Rick's answer would be that typically, yes, we can work through the logistics of that. I don't want to make too many guarantees. Our grant allows us to serve those in Jackson County and actually Dubuque County as well. So we're doing this in Dubuque County. Because we're in the tri-state area up here in Dubuque, we did have somebody from Illinois come over, so that's where the discussion started. So my answer would be is no guarantees, but Rick has been able to find some logistics there. How even if they're outside of Jackson County, and I would have to look at kind of case by case probably, but it is limited for the most part to Jackson County.
Okay.
So are you going to do a news release to the, well, we have the Macokota paper, the Bellevue paper and the Preston Times? I mean, I think it would be great to be interviewed by the newspapers and kind of give, tell them the story and what's available so that people have an opportunity to see and read that.
Thank you. Yep, that's a great idea. I don't think we have done that quite yet.
And in addition, Jack, I would add the Telegraph Herald and the Clinton Herald in particular.
I was thinking there was an article a while back about Hillcrest getting some of this funding.
Yes, in the TH. There was.
I'm sure I read it back then and I was excited.
Right. So now I think we need to do the marketing, the next step and give the actual details. What's available, when it's available, how you access it, those kinds of things. The TH, I think, covers a lot of residents from our county in the northern part.
And the Clinton Herald in the south.
Yep, because of where we're located. We're, so I think those are two other important media outlets.
Is there anything that Clinton County offers that's not here that would kind of be included in that announcement?
That Clinton County offers?
Yeah. Do they have the same setup as what we have here?
Clinton County actually does have a federally qualified community health clinic.
Is that the Bridgeview?
No, Bridgeview is a community mental health center. They in addition have a federally funded, what's called a community health clinic, which provides more of your primary care physician and specialty physical care. The mental health component of services in Clinton County is available primarily through Bridgeview and then a couple of other private providers. But in terms of a behavioral health clinic like this, that is considered to be all comprehensive, meaning it pulls in that primary care physician component that Carrie talked about, as well as assisting with individuals that have mental health and substance abuse concerns, which is a high prevalence of that. And then having the community care coordinator, all of those different aspects are what makes this a federally funded behavioral health clinic. So it is unique, I would say, to the Clinton-Jackson area.
Well, it's, what I've heard is all good news. I think, like I said, as long as we can network and market the services that are available, get the public involved, they're knowledgeable about what could be available to them. I think it's really exciting as far as that goes is I think we utilize the service what we have, you know? That's the thing to do if you can utilize it, if it's available and you get this grant money is a wonderful thing. But if we don't utilize it, what good does it do us?
Absolutely. Oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Carrie.
Oh, well, and I spoke to this a little bit earlier, but yeah, there's, I know Lynn, when you and I met with, with Rick and Joey that day, a month or so ago, you know, if there's, if there's places that you identify would be good for us to really even physically go onsite to speak about this, we'd love to learn and know what those places are. So just to Mike's point, yeah, we know a lot of repetition seems to help with educating about this program. Just getting, getting people excited about it, letting know the process to make a referral. So if you, again, if you know that this would be a good place for us to show up and do a presentation, we're happy to do that and happy to know where those places are.
Can we just talk very briefly to the board about the money being available? It's a two-year grant from what I understand?
It is a two-year grant and my understanding of, this is Rick's program, so I feel I know it fairly well. But my understanding of it is if we do it well for two years, it's something we can be reaccredited for and continue. I know Abbey Center in Cedar Rapids has been running a CCBHC now for, gosh, they're maybe in their third or some plus year. So they, they did this years ago, started off with the two-year grant, did it well and was able to continue and firm it up and keep it as an ongoing program. So that's our hope.
I believe the grant amount was like $1.8 million each year for two years. Is that correct?
Sounds, yes. Yes.
I'm not sure when the grant was started. Do you know? Did it start like in October 1st, like a federal fiscal year grant? Or I know you mentioned you were awarded in March.
Right, we had to be up and running August 31st.
Oh, okay. So you're already several months into the first year.
Yes, yep.
Yeah, we need to get this out there to the.
Amen.
Yeah, we need to get this information available. So, yeah, so if Nicole can get with Lynn, get some ideas. I just, local EMS systems, you know, I don't know that that helps somehow.
Absolutely, the local hospital. Because anybody who's familiar with it, then if they come into contact with somebody having a crisis or any kind of an emergency, they can at least share this information and give the contact information.
Law enforcement?
Yeah, so, yep. No, I will look forward to getting Nicole's information and I will reach out to her today hopefully, so.
I will send it to you soon. Yep, right after I get off the call.
We're excited to see that there's going to be some additional help. It'll be wonderful.
If you're going to do that right away, we don't want to keep you. Have a good day.
Any other, well, unless there's any other questions, I'm happy to answer.
It was nice meeting you. We are excited to hear about it and make sure you call the newspaper and get on KMEQ.
Yeah, we want to on KMEQ. Just Talk, they call it.
Call Sherry Melvold at KMEQ.
I'll share that with Nicole.
Yeah.
Okay.
It is, it is a popular show and there's a lot of people listen to it.
What's, and what was her name again? I'm sorry.
Carrie Melvold.
Okay. Good to know. Thank you.
And it's called Just Talk.
The Just Talk Program.
Wonderful. Well, thank you for that.
And again, yeah, it was nice to meet you and hopefully we'll, we'll see more of each other.
Wonderful. Thanks, everyone.
The Macokota Newspaper and the Bellevue Herald Leader are owned by the same company.
Okay.
The Preston Times would be a separate one. And of course, you know about the Telegraph Herald and probably about the Clinton Herald, so.
Okay.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Carrie.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye.
Okay, Lynn, well, I appreciate you following up with that. That's, that's good news. He wants to, he wants to talk about his four-hour meeting. We don't want.
Well, it's not, it's not on this agenda, but you know, we did have our review of application yesterday, which was, I don't know how you, as the management team, could set through that thing twice or longer, more than that. But I just, I was really frustrated yesterday. I think you could probably tell.
Well, I appreciate your persistence of advocating for some of those applications where it was pretty clear that they were requesting for things that were specifically the result of needing to make adaptations to COVID.
Absolutely.
And when we look at that, I know there is concern about are we really focusing on individuals with disabilities? But I think in the COVID crisis, what we all have to look at is a more global picture. Any one of us are susceptible to suffering from mental health-related kinds of conditions, whether it's anxiety, depression, whatever. We don't know in that audience of schools, for example, both students and staff, which one of those staff or students are going to be impacted adversely in regards to their mental health. And so I think to, you know, we're trying to prevent and intervene for all students because we are all susceptible to needing some kind of support during this COVID. And that's, I think, what you were trying to accomplish.
I guess the thing that bothered me the most is how there was no flexibility.
No, no.
And in this, with this crisis, there's got to be some flexibility. And I said, as I said several times, the main thing is trying to keep those kids safe. And I just felt like some of them just were walking out the door.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I, I just, I could hardly tolerate it.
Well, at this stage of the game, I guess there's a, there's a large responsibility for everyone to listen. I read in one of the governing magazines, I think it was three or four days ago, that long-term that 20% of the individuals that were touched by this are going to have mental issues.
Oh, absolutely.
So I mean, that, it's in different aspects, whatever it may be. So there's, there's, it's a learning curve for all of us and I think it's a listening process that everybody, we all need to go through. I can't imagine what you.
I really know people that are afraid to go out of their house.
Oh.
They don't want to go out of their house because they don't want to get the COVID. They don't want to die. And, you know, I just guess from our meeting yesterday, I just thought we kind, some of us, some of them kind of lost direction.
Yeah.
And.
It's actually hard to have them reconsider and look at things differently. And in general, some of them were not very receptive. They were pretty set and they were feeling the mission of what the money should be used for. I applaud you for hanging in there.
I guess one of the things at, at the end of the meeting, when they talked about the IVPs.
Oh, yeah.
I really think we need to talk to our school system and say, please consider applying.
Yeah. Well, you know, I do know, so this last round was sent out to all the school districts within our mental health region. And as Jack found out, learned yesterday from Superintendent Hoover, the schools have had access to other sources of money as well. And so some of the school districts have been pretty cautious about making sure they're not duplicating federal funds to offset the costs that they've experienced. And so.
Because there are rules and guidelines and if the school system takes money from us and has the money in another pocket or another bucket, they might have to pay some of that back, right? When they're, and so, and I was telling them before that, you know, the management team went through these applications, kind of narrowed down what would be acceptable, what wouldn't be acceptable. So that when it came to us, it was our option to trim it a little more if we so desired. But I just think, I was just amazed at some of the requests and some of the denials. I just.
Yeah.
Well, and that's something we have to work through, you know, I guess. And I certainly commend you for having that lengthy of a conversation with whoever it may be. It's.
Like we have twenty-four, twenty-five?
Twenty-seven and twenty-seven applications.
And to get that many, and to get, yeah, get that many applications and then they get to everybody to agree is another process.
Well, when you look at the lowest one, I think was 1,610.
Yeah.
And the highest one was 386 something.
Yeah, something like that.
Three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Wow.
But you're also looking at districts that are very small.
Sure.
And then the Quad City School Districts, for example, Davenport School District. So just by volume of students and their requests are going to look very differently in terms of dollar amounts on paper. But then they're also serving, you know, disparity in the number of students.
Yes, that's one of the things we discussed at the beginning of our session was, are we only supposed to be using this money for people that, for the, for the children that really have mental issues? Or, and I guess my consensus was, and I think it ended up being the consensus of the group, is it has a mental effect on everybody. And you can't just pinpoint one child against 10 others because they're all living through it, right? And they all have the stress. They all, either, they're either being taught virtually or they're being taught face to face, but it still causes stress.
Loss of a loved one or whatever it may be.
And it's not only stressful for them, but it's stressful for their parents or whoever is responsible for those children. And you have to look at all of that. You can't just look at one, one, one person.
Right.
And I, I don't know, I just.
You know, in some schools, I mean, all schools probably have to do this sometimes. They physically had to buy, say, individual chairs to get away from table setups in their classrooms so that they could socially distance the students in the classroom. That was one example that was given by one district and was that an acceptable?
Well, that was what it's got.
Right.
And I was telling them that they didn't want it at tables. They wanted to separate it socially because that's what the governor and that's what everybody says. You're supposed to have social distancing and yet that wasn't good enough reason.
Right.
For some of them.
Yeah, I know.
Hard to differentiate in some of that, so. We sure appreciate the work you're doing there, both of you.
Well, and I will work with Hillcrest and.
Well, that's, that's an exciting news, you know, I mean, for you to, whatever news you can, whatever information you can get out of Nicole and how many people know that this office is down in 117? I'm going to drive by.
Right across from Prithaplis.
Yeah, so and the Mental Health Center has been there since 2001, 2002. When we moved from the hospital to that location and that's where DHS originally were located as well.
They were a part of the building and the Mental Health Center and the other part.
So that's why I asked about two separate addresses because at one time there were two separate agencies in the same building. And we had different addresses when I worked at the Mental Health Center, so thank you.
Thank you, Lynn. Thank you for the job. Thank you, Lynn. Thank you for the job. Well done. Uh, where is my agenda? Okay, we are. Rick and Carrie, uh, we have a budget work session scheduled?
Who's that?
Oh, Galaxy?
Yeah.
Yeah, your Galaxy it says.
You know what? I'm going to unmute you. How's that?
Oh, you're still muted. She could probably, there she did.
Let's see if we can hear.
There I am.
There you are.
Okay.
Here I am.
It doesn't say Lanny. I'm just telling you.
Well, that's okay. I am the whole galaxy down here.
You gotta go up, you gotta go up to participants and put change in it.
Okay, that would be a little bit beyond my technology. You're just lucky it got me this way so I can talk to you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, we are here for a budget work session with you. Is that correct?
I'm, I was told that, yes.
So what do you have for us?
Well, unfortunately, this is too early in the year for me to bring you or give you any of our state, um, information like I always do, all of those facts and figures. Um, I will however, tell you the economic impact of the fair continues to, or the fairgrounds continues to affect the, the county and the city for the mere fact that, um, we just had a dog show here that had people from multiple states, as in like over 16. So, um, yes, it's mostly hotels and gas and restaurants, but it's hotels and gas and restaurants. And they are picking up information, the tourism association and the Makoka Chamber and the Bellevue Chamber all provided information to the people that came so that they learn about Jackson County.
Yep. And it sure is trying times for you, I suppose, and all your other workers and.
Yeah, yeah. And we're, we're hanging in here the best we can and trying to keep everybody safe as best we can. And I think honestly, we're doing a pretty good job of it.
We agree. So I guess at this time, there was really nothing for us to discuss as far as the budget goes?
Um, please keep us in mind, if you got any extras, we could all use roofs around here.
Get in line.
And I, and, and that's why I don't, I don't ask and I request because I know that you guys have given to us most generously the past couple, three, four years and will continue to support the, the 4-H kids with our yearly stipend that you have. And, you know, guys, thanks so much for what you've done for us.
And thank you and your staff.
Okay.
We're, we're, we're also, as we've stated in the past, we're extremely proud of the fairgrounds and, and what you're, you and your staff do down there. And, um, you know, we always are interested in what your needs are. We might not be able to fulfill all the needs, but we still need to know what your plans are for the future.
Well, um, actually, we're starting, uh, next spring, we'll have a golfing range or a driving range set up in the back 40. Um, just another way to try to get some income here. And I've always thought that that space was not used as best as possible. And so our, our new groundskeeper came up with this idea. And so we've got that developed and, um, or in the process of developing and hopefully will open up in the spring. And, um, we're, the horse arena had been moved this year and that looks, um, looking good. And, uh, area horse shows, um, have used it a couple of times and are planning on coming back. Like I said, um, the AKC Dog Show is looking at coming back to us. Again, the woodcarvers are looking to come back to us. They love our grounds and our facilities. So, I mean, we're, we're, we're getting quite the reputation out there. And with the addition of the new building, um, with the extension offices here, I can only see us going forward and being a positive contribution to the county.
I agree.
Thanks, Lanny.
All right.
Have a good day.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we've talked to Nick, which was on our agenda at 11:00. So that's over with. Any board or commission report? I know Jack reported there. Um, any unfinished business?
When are we going to get together with Brent and John to discuss the floor plan of the jail and see what we're, if it's exactly how we want it? How, if he's got any suggestions? I don't know. Um, when he first looked at the floor plan, he thought maybe there, maybe there were some things he had questions about. But I think we need to do that so that we can move forward and get everything ready for our.
Your final.
Flyer that we're going to send out to the public and get everything, make sure that.
I agree. That's going to, that's going to be here before we know it. I know that John.
It's almost the end of November.
Yeah, I, I know that John had reached out to Brent, I believe, after the election. He asked me for his contact number anyway. And, and hopefully they, they had the conversation that, uh, going forward, um, I, I certainly can get ahold of Brent and see if, or John both and see if we can get together sometime.
See if we can set that up.
What's the percentage of completion of the Delaware County jail?
Oh, I'm not sure. It should be almost, I would think.
You know, I wouldn't mind going up if that's the case, going up and maybe take a tour. If I'm sure Jeff would love to take us through it.
Jeff said he would.
Yeah.
Anytime we wanted to come.
Well, you said it was similar to.
Well, it's a similar size of ours.
Maybe that's what we need to.
Do, do you have Jeff's contact? Jeff, maybe you want to touch base with Jeff and see if there's a time or a time we could go and, and take a road trip and go through it unless we want to each do it personally. I think would be easier.
I'll be with E C I A tomorrow and Jeff is on that. So I'll talk to him and see if we can set up a time.
And maybe even, uh, you know, maybe we can touch out, touch base with, uh, Brent and see if he's available too at some point. Maybe we can touch base.
That'd be good to have him.
See if Brent's, what his schedule is. I don't know what his schedule is.
Like I said, I wanted to put it on a trailer to bring it back here.
It ain't that easy.
I know.
I'd take more of that trailer.
Just an update on the care facility a little bit. We are, um, we have a couple other names that Marty was going to take up and get some concrete bids on. Um, the county has agreed to, for fee, of course, um, move some dirt for us here. Some of that, that all been settled in, they're going to make a nice pile for that. So Marty and, and Jared, is it Jared? Yeah, Jared can work with and, and get that septic system smoothed out somewhat. And where we pulled them trees out last year. So that's going forward. Nice to know that that's in process. I believe they're going to repair that dike and put a drain tube so that there's a drain tube in the dike so it don't wash out again. So hopefully that's okay with everyone. That's maintenance that needs to be.
I think that's important.
Yeah, maintenance that needs to be done. So. Yeah, well, yeah. We're talking 12-inch tube anyway. So that should take, I don't know how many acres flow into that, but there's not that many. But, yeah. So that's just maintenance that was due. Otherwise. See, you have some interesting issues on your conservation board meeting this evening. I appreciate the minutes and the info we get in the mail. Yeah, I think it's good information and, uh, needs to be out there.
Yeah, we had a meeting, oh, was that two weeks ago now? Out here. Yeah, and, um, a guy from Des Moines was here with a USDA. Yeah. They can't really do any lake areas, but they do like lower the banks down. So you got a flood plane to slow the water down and stuff. So, um, kind of looked at that. I gave him the tour of the park and went over the old mill and showed them how that was set up. So, so that's good information. And everybody was changing numbers and stuff. So Gerald was there. There's, with the city project, the Main Street project, they get a 10% rebate for flood litigation for the area, which is 1.2 million dollars. So, and that can be used for projects throughout the city or in the park, any, anything to help the water quality of the Makoka River. So that's, yeah, wow, that's a lot of money that's there. So, and even, I mean, there's other grant money out there too. So.
Well, that's what we certainly need to check into, whatever's available to us. And if we can match or whatever, we may be able to do is to move forward.
Yeah. And all that can, I mean, the water quality is the main thing, but if they can, if it includes recreation or, you know, uh, just anything that would, you bring more people through the county and different things like that. So that's exciting.
Yes, it is.
Any other business before the board this morning?
I would move we adjourn.
I have a second. I have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carried, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for attending and have a great day and week. Stay safe and healthy.